In the meeting of the City of Long Branch, council will now come to order. Roll call.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Boat?
Here.
Mrs. Wittes?
Here.
Dr. Sully?
Here.
Please stand for pledge allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
United States of America. And we declare our vote which stands one nation on their side, indivisible, indivisible, and every being and just fair.
May I hereby certify that this meeting has been published in newspapers in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act and those as required by law.
With respect to today being 9-1-1, the devastation that took place 18 years ago, can we please have a moment of silence? Reading in a soul of the previous minutes, I need a motion to approve the minutes from the August 28th, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Boat?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Dr. Sully?
No, abstain, I'm sorry.
Yes. Consideration of ordinance, public hearing and final consideration, we have none. Ordinance number, ordinance for introduction, ordinance number seventeen dash nineteen has been removed, this is from the agenda this evening. Now we're gonna go back to the item that we, that I skipped over, waiting for our attorney to, uh, kid here. You're hearing for the denial of the taxi license?
So, council president, if I can, this is a hearing under the township code, there was a taxi cab license that was, driver's license that was denied by the police department. This is under the township, excuse me, the city code, the person who was denied has a right to come in and state for the record why it is that he thinks that that decision should be overturned. I, Chief, I have Chief Roebuck here, I just wanna for the record say that we had an opportunity to talk with the applicant beforehand and he wanted to go forward with the hearing. I think maybe if the chief comes up, we can just put on the record why it was that the license was denied and then give the gentleman an opportunity to be heard.
Thank you.
And I, Chief, can you come up? So, and I will just state, note for the record that the basis for this denial, and the chief will lay it out, is there's a state law that prohibits municipalities from issuing these kind of licenses to people with certain convictions and that the, and the denial here is based upon a conviction that violates the statute, so, Chief, if you can.
Sure, in 2011, there was some additions passed to the taxi law by then-Governor Christie.
Chief, could you, uh, just, thank you.
And by law, we, we can't issue Mr. Alvarado a license due to his criminal history. Don't feel we need to go through it unless you want to, or unless he wants us to, it's pretty lengthy, and I don't know if we wanna do that in open.
So, Mr. Alvarado, you can, you can come up now if you want.
Which one do I go?
You, you, is that okay, council president, if he sits here?
That's fine.
That's fine. So.
If you don't mind, I think you might wanna explain. You have a seat, sir. You can have a seat, sir. Sure. Yeah, so, so council, but once again, the process here is, i-if council wants, they
can ask, they can ask questions of the applicant. I, I think in this circumstance where we're dealing with strictly with a statutory denial, it's probably best to give Mr. Alvarado a chance to be heard, and then council will have to, once again, as, as I indicated, because this is a, just a statutory denial, there's really not, there's really not much of a fact question here. Go ahead, Mr. Alvarado.
Yeah, I understand, you know, that, you know, it took me, the reason why I'm here is because I, you know, I know I'm gonna be denied, I, I know this was gonna happen, you know, because the chance towards me is rare, you know, but I just wanted to speak clearly and put things out there that, um, you know, I'm not a violent crime, I didn't go down a violent, I'm not a violent, I didn't go down a violent crime, and when I went to prison, I went down there and I took, I took advantage of prison, you know, I went to school, I worked, I got educated, I took programs, I did everything possible that I knew was gonna help me, to help me in society, and I took programs, and the programs told me that I'd come out of society and, you know, it was gonna be, it was gonna be hard for me, but they had programs for me that was gonna help me out, and I thought I was doing it out here, you know, I really thought I was doing it. I had a job, I thought I was doing great as a taxi driver, and that job right now failed me like all my other jobs, every job that I had, they holding me accountable for my past, you know, for drug convictions, petty drug convictions, that I went and got help for, that I did programs for, that I did a lot of things in the community, and programs, you know, I really did, you know, things that, yeah, I got my driver's license, you know, I matched up, I'm not on parole, no probation, nothing, all I wanted was to drive, you know, make, make, make ends meet for my family, take care of my kids, my wife, my grandson, and, you know, I, it's just bad, you know, and it, it bothers me a lot because this is one of the things that happened to me in the past that caused me to go back to prison, because I didn't have no chance, I didn't have no chance to work, everybody, everybody denied me, you know, because the old ones were judging me on stereotype on my past, and it's bad, and I wanna make that clear, like, you know, like, when is, when it, you know, when is, you know, when is it gonna stop to the point that somebody's gonna be like, you know, I even have a state, I have a federal bonding on me too, I have a federal bonding that's supposed to help me, that the state gave to me, and it makes nothing going on, I still don't have a job, every job that I did, they let go of me, you know, all because of my past, and, and I just wanna make that clear, like, you know, what I have to do, you know, it's, it bothers me.
So, and, and just, thank you, so, just, Chief, I just wanna make sure so that the record is clear, because this is kind of a public hearing, there are, there are a list of offenses that are contained in the law that you were talking about, which is, for the record, it's New Jersey statutes annotated forty-eight, colon, sixteen, dash, three. Based upon a criminal background check, did you determine that one of the disqualified, that, that Mr. Alvarado had a conviction to, for one of the disqualifying crimes?
Yes.
Okay. So, and that statute simply says a person shall be disqualified from operating or driving an auto cab, which is a taxi cab on the state law, if a criminal history background check requires pursuant to this subsection reveals a record of conviction of any of the following crimes. So, there's, it lists a whole, I don't know that we need to, for the public record, list all of those crimes here, suffice to say that the, the record that the council has before it indicates that there is a conviction. So, I, I don't, I don't think we have anything further. Madam clerk, do you require a, a vote?
Oh, no.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarado.
Public portion for resolution and all general comments, I need a motion to open the public portion of the meeting for all comments.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? If anyone in the audience has any comments to make, please step to the microphone, state your name and address clearly for the record. You will have five minutes and you will only be allowed to speak once.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Palone and members of the council, my name is Anita Claybring and I live on 161 Garrett Drive in Long Branch. I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm just here to make an announcement, the Monmouth County Democrats' disability caucus will have its monthly meeting on Tuesday, September 17th, at the Long Branch Street Public Library from 6:00 to 7:45 PM. Our guest speaker will be Scott Chesney, ambassador for the Christopher and Dana Reed Foundation. Scott will speak about how living with a disability motivates himself to inspire others to live for an independent lives. Scott will also speak about accessible beaches in Long Branch and how they ensure inclusion for people with disabilities. I hope to see all of you at this monthly meeting, thank you all very much.
Good evening, my name is Ann Pace of 507 Harrison Street, the subject is the traffic problems on Harrison Street. There are serious reasons to request an action by the City of Long Branch to address the traffic problems. We, the undersigned residents, are requesting that a speed bump be placed on the street in the middle of the block. The following issues were brought to the council on July 10th, 2014, and on August 23rd, 2016. Since then, the situation has not improved and in fact, the safety issues have increased. Harrison Street is two blocks long, one block begins on Washington Street and ends by turning a sharp right to Dudley Street. That block is wide and allows for cars parking on both sides of the street as well as two-way vehicle traffic. The second block runs from Washington Street to Branchport Avenue and is very narrow. Residents park their cars on both sides of the street, which allows for only one car to drive down the street at a time. This block is also very short, there are only four houses directly facing the street on both south and north sides of the street. In addition, driveway access for all four corner houses is also on Harrison Street. Many drivers travel at an unusually excessive rate of speed for such a short, narrow street just to get between Branchport Avenue and Washington Street, requiring a full stop at the stop signs at both ends of the block. It has been officially estimated that some drivers attain a speed of forty or more miles an hour in that short distance. With cars parked on both sides of the street, driving conditions are hazardous. There is a tremendous volume of traffic on Harrison Street, unusual except for the fact that it provides a shortcut from Branchport Avenue to Broadway near Seashore School. Drivers can avoid two lights on Broadway as well as the congestion in the uptown area by taking the shortcut. The volume of traffic has significantly increased during the summer and on weekends. In addition, this shortcut is used by employees driving seated vehicles to and from the public works yard on the corner of Branchport and Julyne Avenues. This particular traffic also increases in the summer as vehicles used for beach maintenance and other beach-related activities use the street for this purpose. Large trucks, including J R D and flatbed auto carriers and even large Mack trucks, also use this shortcut and pose a danger traveling down this narrow street, they should be prohibited. Safety, since the previous letters to council, more young families with small children have moved into the neighborhood and those youngsters are at risk of injury as some now ride their bikes beyond their own driveways, chasing balls that have rolled into the street and play with other children across the street. Some of these children reside in houses on Branchport Avenue and Washington Street but their driveways face onto Harrison Street where the children play and live across the street from one another. Residents are justifiably concerned about their children's safety. It is also hazardous for residents who are pulling out of their driveways since the traffic is speeding so often and it is difficult to see around the parked cars to navigate getting out onto the streets safely. Our appeal to the city is in hopes that corrective action should be taken before a tragedy occurs. Quality of life, the homes on Harrison Street have front porches where residents sit out front to enjoy the old-fashioned ambience of small-town life and where neighbors always take the time to help each other. The friendliness of this neighborhood makes one proud to be a resident of Long Branch. It is diversity at its best and welcoming of immigrants who have recently become citizens. It is a pleasure to sit on the porches, chat with one's neighbors, and entertain visitors outside, this despite cars speeding up and down the street, creating noise and exhaust pollution and fear of harm. Property value, real estate professionals consider the street a quiet residential neighborhood in determining the value of the homes there, compared, for example, to Julyne Avenue one block away. If they knew about the volume of traffic and excessive rate of speed by many drivers, their properties would be assessed lower than they are now. Neither the property owners nor the City of Long Branch benefit by that consequence. Recommendation, based upon the situations identified above, the easiest method to ameliorate many of the issues is to place a speed bump in the middle of this block. In addition, amending the wait limit on vehicular traffic utilizing Harrison Street would also help mitigate some of the traffic and safety problems. Respectfully submitted, and the neighbors have all signed their names. Thank you.
So, if you could, if you could stay after again, let's, if, Chief, if you could, we could have this discussion, I know we've, we've talked and in 2016, we had a little study. We've been talking about speed bumps, you know, I don't know if that's something we could do, the chief could maybe explain why or why not, but, but it certainly, let's have that conversation after the meeting if we could. Thanks.
I'm Newton Richards, 507 Harrison Street, husband of the lovely young lady who just read that letter. I wanna supplement this a little bit, because the, the last, the last time around going through this, the police department did put up a little speed checking sign, and it would flash and tell you how fast you were going down the street, it's very nice. The batteries lasted all of maybe three days, it was up there for three weeks, nobody came to do anything about replacing the batteries, and we never heard about any follow-up to it. It'd be nice to find out what, you know, this brought about. The, some of the vehicles that Ann was talking about, one of which was the big rig that is used to sweep the beach, level the sand, so it's nice every morning, right? That's a big vehicle, I've seen it come down the street twice, I haven't seen it this year, haven't, didn't see it last year, but I saw it twice before that, that's, that's a no-no, that's just too big a vehicle to be coming down the street to begin with with that size. And the other is, it's, it is a shortcut, but we have people, a business on Washington that uses this as a shortcut to get out to the light at Joe Line and Branchport, because they don't wanna take the 200 feet to go down to Joe Line and make a left-hand turn. So, all their trucks come up Harrison, turn right on Branchport, go down to the light to make a left-hand turn. It's just a residential neighborhood, and a lot of this, you know, it, you know, when school is in session, it's one thing, but in the summertime when the kids are out playing and on weekends when the kids are out and playing, that's a lot of traffic that shouldn't be there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Carolina Santos of 503 Harrison Street, along with my neighbors, this is my first time, so I'm a little nervous, but I felt the need to come down after being at this residence for a year now. We have two small children, we personally see the vehicles driving past our street at incredibly high speeds, and, like I said, we have two small children, we're trying to teach them to like take out the trash and stuff, something as simple, I can't let my children out there like that because of fear of like the cars driving 50 miles an hour. We have another little one on the way, we would like to have them out there playing, we don't feel safe with them out there because of such high speeds. We have a camera facing the street and we could, we could see, we can hear them first and then we go back on the camera, we see how fast they actually go. For over a year, it's just getting ridiculous with the amounts of traffic that are there and the high speeds, like we've said, something really needs to be done, our neighbors have told us that they've tried previously for many years, and I just think that this should be looked at a little closely because something dangerous could happen, something as easily as me coming out of my driveway, I have to come to a stop most of the time because the cars don't stop. My son sits in the rear seat and it could easily be collided with because cars don't slow down as we're coming out of our driveways. So, if there's anything you guys can do and just take a look at it a little bit further, we really appreciate it, and thank you so much for your time.
Chief, go ahead.
Yeah, the sign that we put up there last year, just because it doesn't seem to be on, doesn't mean it's not on, sometimes we shut it off, so once people see how fast they're going, they don't go that fast, so sometimes we leave the numbers off. So, I have the data, so if they wanna speak to me after, we can go after the data, I have a camera phone, we can.
I can't hear a word.
Well, let's, let's talk later and see if we could take a closer look at, you know, take another look at it.
He can't come up to the mic?
Oh, if he wants to come over to the mic, Mr. Minoli, but, Mr. Minoli.
I wanna hear what he said.
I know, but, I, I think the chief said what he was gonna say.
I didn't hear it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Vincent Lepore requesting one-minute notification, 33 Ocean Terrace, Long Branch. It's a deplorable agenda this evening, very deplorable.
Would you please speak into the mic?
With all the problems this city has, we have a very deplorable agenda this evening, only two items, one to adopt an audit, another to pay the bills, what do we have the meeting for? Resolution 185-19 concerning the audit, would've been nice had the full audit been put online for the people to observe prior to this meeting. As far as the comments and the findings, the auditor finds just general housekeeping, nothing significant, which is of special attention to the office of senior citizens activities. Apparently, the auditor didn't find anything wrong, it's very clean. Again, Mr. Palone, we are awaiting a public defense of the senior director, Pat Kornicki, from the baseless financial allegations leveled at her by Alice Kessler, in addition to the discriminatory allegations leveled at the director of the senior center by Alice Kessler. This audit virtually vindicates the senior center of any flawed accusations by Alice Kessler. Mayor Palone, we're awaiting the public defense of that department head. Pat Kornicki is far more deserving of the respect than that which you are showing her, and if you don't do it soon, Mr. Palone, we're gonna fill this room up again and demand it. As far as the rest of the audit is concerned, the utility fund, the audit is required to show all related agency debts in the city. The audit did not disclose the sewage authority debt but mentioned the Board of Education. Audit items of serious interest, again, the city pension liability outstanding, fifteen million, nine hundred eighty-one thousand, unfunded. This is, should be of concern not only to the city employees but to the taxpayers of this city, time bombs ticking. The trust fund, trust fund balance is 10.2 million, out of the 10.2 million, 8.8 million is identified as a reserve for miscellaneous deposits. What are the miscellaneous deposits? Why weren't they itemized? HMFA, the city's allowed to abate taxes for affordable housing, calendar year ending December 1st, 31st, 2018, there's a figure of 2 million, 46,000 abated. The audit itemizes 1,199,775 of these abatements to the city, housing authority properties. The balance, approximately 41 percent, 846,946 dollars is not disclosed or identified on this audit, leaving one suspect as to know as to why it wasn't itemized. Beach revenue audit, beach revenue, 1,935,72, salary and wage is 723. Approximately 55 percent of the beach revenues are not itemized as to where they are spent. Then would it be accurate to conclude of the revenue not spent, that direct salary and other itemized expenses are diverted to pay for other individual departments for time they spend on related beach work? Parking revenue, 1,554,818. Thinking of what Board of Ed member Avery Grant stated several meetings ago, the city's doing very well on parking revenue.
Mr. Lepore, you have one minute.
Most kind to you, clerk, thank you. So, as to continue collecting parking revenue in light of a through 30-year tax abatement for Kushner, huh, one would state that the revenue coming in on the parking is very good, but what's most troubling is the abatements concerning assessed valuation. Assessed valuation, approximately 4,481,0216, 2018, 4,540,000 roughly, 58 million dollar growth in assessed values is paltry, it's a joke. This city's redevelopment has been a dismal failure, the whole purpose was to pay down a $23 million debt and taper tax increases for residents of the rest of this city, and it's failed. And then you add insult to injury by adding a new 30-year tax abatement to Kushner on Broadway. Fact is, this audit just clearly reveals again, we have a destabilized tax base in this city, particularly for single-family homeowners, and it's getting worse.
Mr. Lepore, your time is up.
It's hopeless, junk government.
Avery Grant, 4005 Atlantic Avenue, I just wanted to say today, the school district took pride in honoring the first responders from 9/11, we were very happy to do that. It was a nice affair and we honored the police and the firemen, the mayor and Dr. Sully and Mr. Dangler were there, so it was a very nice occasion, and that's what I had come here to say, and tonight, we had a service at the VFW to honor too, and, and with the VFW, we're wearing our hats and, and moving around in the, the country to say to the government, let's try policies rather than causing war, and I would hope that you would join in anything that goes along with it, we want diplomacy to be effective, we don't need wars and we stand ready to go, even at my age, if we called, we'd go back. And in closing, I'm very sorry to hear about Pat, and I know Dr. Sully, you go over there and I go over there, she runs a good show, I was the second chairman of the Advisory Council on Aging for Monmouth County, and Long Branch was always on the curve of being the best one in the county, we've always had programs, I made sure that whatever they needed, we got it done, we started the SCAT system, which was only for senior citizens at first, and then they changed it to special citizens, but I happened to be on the Red Cross board at the same time, and I knew even though through the 15 program, we got vehicles but we didn't have drivers, and that's why I pushed to get the SCAT system started, and then they started the Meals on Wheels, that started at Riverview, Patrick, the construction guy started that, and we had problems, so I had to take both Gloria Philippi to the, to the officers' club at Fort Monmouth, we settled the problem, Meals on Wheels was running. So, what I'm saying to you is, we can't afford to fool around with Pat and the program, she loves that program, and if there's some problem that should be resolved, there's no way it should be dismissed or anything else, and I'd be happy if my lawyer, we got the best lawyers in the world, I'd put pay to get her defended if that happens, I don't wanna challenge you, but she runs a good program and anything happened, that thing with Kessler was not intentional, I understand it was on one of the Jewish holidays and she got upset, well, she had nothing against it, there's no discrimination, anything there, that was just a date that she pulled in affair that day and somebody said that she did it because she didn't care about the Jewish religion, and that's a falsification. So, I would urge you to stay away from anything, if there's a problem, discuss it with her. If there's a problem, discuss it with her. Because she runs an outstanding program, and she loves it. And I tell you, I enjoy going just to have a good meal. So thank you very much.
Mr. Grant, with all due respect, I have no idea what Mr. Lepore is talking about.
I know neither, but just, I'm asking you.
Dr. Selly, myself, since we've come into office, well, since I've come into office in 2010 as a councilman and mayor, we have been nothing but supportive of the senior center and of the senior director.
I appreciate it.
So just wanted to make you clear. You know, people can come up and they can say whatever they want to say, but what he's saying, I'm not sure of what he's saying, frankly, but it is untrue. That I can tell you. Dr. Selly, would you agree with everything I just said?
Yes.
A member of Board of Directors of the senior center, by the way, for the last 20 years or so.
Well, it's good that she's saying that. Thank you very much.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. McNolley.
Born in Long Branch, I live in Asbury Park, New Jersey now. If I may, I'd like to, again, 9/11, and God bless the United States and everyone involved since then as victims.
Mr. McNolley, can you just lift the mic a little bit?
Sure.
Thank you.
How's that better? I would like to state that I find it objectionable when this council and the mayor sort of after comment when people up here are long gone. In other words, like now, what I would consider the attack on Mr. Lepore.
Mr. McNolley, I want to, if I may.
All right, well, wait a minute. Don't use my time.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
So, you know, I don't consider that acceptable, like when the council presidents or yourself or whomever, you know, go after us after we're long gone. You know, it's just not.
You're making a statement that's inaccurate. I'll certainly wait until you finish, but I would like to reply because you continue within an accurate time.
Well, stop the clock and go ahead.
But go ahead.
I'm listening.
You are listening.
Okay.
Okay. So as you probably know, because you're here at every meeting, I have on so many occasions wanted to meet with Mr. Lepore, sit down with him one-on-one. All he does, and about two meetings ago, what he said to me when I tried to answer his question or address it, "Mr. Pallone, I am not interested in anything you have to say." So if you want to turn that back to me and say that the mayor and council don't respond, I don't know what you would want to hear from me. When I try to address Mr. Lepore, his answer is exactly what I said. "I'm not interested in anything you have to say," quote-unquote. So please continue at this point.
Well, no, then let me just respond to that.
So I mean, to say that we don't respond.
Well, we're off the clock.
Do I respond to you, Mr. McNolley?
I don't want to get off the subject. When Mr. Lepore finished, you just went after him in a way that a lot of us don't agree with.
You know why? You know why, Mr. McNolley?
Why? Tell me why.
Because anytime I did, or any member of this council does, it just gets into a screaming and shouting match. And quite frankly, today, I'm not interested in doing that, okay? It's 9/11. I don't want to get into that. And if that's wrong, then I apologize. But again, let's be clear. He has made clear that he does not want a response from me, does not want to talk to me, discuss anything with me, or I'm assuming for most of the council at this point as well. So please proceed.
Well, why should?
And fortunately, you're not like that. So thank you.
Well, why should he when we have a police chief here who he just signed a lawsuit against for arresting him in this chamber? You know, what more can happen?
You were driving, you're part of the council, not of the police chief.
What more can happen to Mr. Lepore here, where he has to come in, fear he's going to be arrested unlawfully by a public safety director with a badge and a weapon? And he should just forget that. Anyway, that's my comment. Let me go back on the thing here. So here's my time. So I don't know how many people here are aware, if you read the Asbury Park Press front page, a person, a press person, a citizen, actually someone born in Long Branch and raised in Asbury and Long Branch, was viciously attacked in the early morning by two Asbury Park police officers with knives and guns. They came to his temporary hotel room. They attacked his vehicle there because I was a few feet away. And then they went to my home in Asbury and attacked my other vehicle with police weapons and knives. And they were arrested 12 hours later by the Monmouth County prosecutor. I'm the victim. So really, what I like to say, week after week, when I come here, and it seems to fall on deaf ears no matter who says it, is that there are a lot of us victims of police brutality, police excessive force, et cetera, et cetera. Here are the official victim reports. Anyone can step forward, the trials are coming up, I believe in October, and try and defend the actions of the Asbury Park Police. Now, why do I say that? They're facing 26 years in prison, right? The prosecutor charged them with violence, weapons offenses, conspiracy coming after me. So when people like myself or Mr. Lepore stand up here and say, we just don't feel comfortable coming to Long Branch or Asbury and criticizing the police because there's retaliation factors. And then once in a while, a council member will say, are you being, do you feel retaliated or a little bit in fear? And we say, yes. And that's the last we hear of it. What's done to stop it? I've been asking now who's involved, Asbury, Neptune, where one of the crimes occurred, and the prosecutor, that. My thing says three minutes and one second. Okay. So I've been asking at least for some letter, either through the council in Long Branch, the council in Asbury, in Neptune, or the prosecutor, to at least say, look, you know, Mr. McNolley, we know you're a high-profile person. You criticize a lot the police and the municipalities. I do that. I admit it. That's what my job is. I'm a watchdog. I like to protect citizens. And I feel that police, government, a lot of times, is culpable. What do I say? Of crime, of corruption, and of nepotism. Now, anybody can say what they want, but the records are clear. Asbury's the second most dangerous place in the state, Neptune is number 15, and Long Branch is number 25. No one's going to change that. There's 565 municipalities. You only have to read not just this, what happened to me, but what's going on. Body bags every day, shootings every day. You know, Long Branch is not far behind. Shootings, attacks, students brutally, 284 Van Pelt Place, a female student by another, I think, Long Branch student, stabbed 38 times. I mean, what's, who's controlling crime and corruption? And it's never going to be controlled in Long Branch, Asbury, or Neptune. It's only going to be education ameliorated or prevention. And I don't know, either police chief Hunt, Newman, Schneider and Allen Hurst. Roebuck in Long Branch, or Kelso in Asbury. Who's even willing to talk? You talk mayor about being refused. Do you know how many times?
Your time is up, sir.
No, it isn't.
Yes, it is, sir.
Well, I timed it. What, are you using your watch?
No, I'm using the clerk's watch, which with.
Did you say my time is up?
After five minutes, we're going to dial it off.
Yeah, I know. Okay, now it says four minutes and 59 seconds. You're a little bit ahead of the time, Mr. Dangler. Better get a better stopwatch, stopwatch.
I've been told I'm ahead of the time.
Excuse me?
I'm always told that I'm ahead of my.
Yeah, I know. Now come your after comments.
I understand it.
Yeah, go ahead.
Hello, everybody, Mary Cancers. I'm not going to speak anything over here. I'm going to speak to the guy over here, Robach, right there. Robach, I told you two years to go, go see a doctor. You got issues up here, mister. You harassed me for 25 years for drugs. I want to know if you have sent drugs to your family, you know what I mean? What's all about you and Snyder, it harassed me so many years. I go any doctor to see my feet, he say you got a change, you know, with the police department, Robach. Who are you? What do you think you are? Let's go tomorrow morning, Freehold or Trenzo, the criminal building, I'm going to lock you up over there in a minute. That's it. That's the bottom line, mister, because I never see drugs in my life, I never speak anybody drugs when I come this town over here, okay, Robach? You want to see something? Those stones I'm going to put in the garbage right there. Me, me, beating the grid. You mess around with me, you got to pay the price, mister, because I'm the cleanest man on the earth. Now you go over there, send the cops, you know, me all over, I go in the beach, don't scare me. You don't scare me a lot. You make my day every day, Robach. I want you to Trenzo, the criminal building, see the judges, and I'm going to destroy your career. That's the bottom line. Thank you, Beth.
Thank you, sir.
That's it. Can you give a license to this guy?
Good evening. Marsha Brown, 111 July Avenue, Long Branch. First, I wanted to say to this young man here about his taxi license. I don't believe this, statute does not contain a waiver in it, but you can might be able to move to get it expunged. So I would suggest that you call the Monmouth Legal Aid Society, see if you can get some help with it. As I understand the specific categories that would preclude expungement, you don't fall into that unless you were a distributor. You know, you're arrested for selling drugs, or you had a certain amount, so good luck with that. So I just wanted to bring quickly three things to the council's attention that I had brought before. One is the question of the community center, right? And I had mentioned at a previous meeting about a model that I thought Woodbridge offered for us, but a really comprehensive community center that not only offered opportunity for recreation, but meetings and different kinds of sports and activities for our young people. Wanted to know what you guys had thought about that. The other thing was, I had also talked before about an anti-poverty strategy, because we know that there's an increasing number of people in Long Branch whose incomes are decreasing and whose incomes are not increasing, and compared to the, you know, the number of people moving into our community with a lot of money, it becomes something that I think the city has to deal with if we look at that over time. So two things, I was wondering, are we tracking foreclosures? And are we tracking landlords who don't live here? And what the impact of that is? The last thing, and I hope you'll be able to respond to this tonight, I don't know if it was the mayor, but someone mentioned about the possibility of an ombudsman for the city in this. There are few cities in the United States that have ombudsmen. It's very popular internationally, but in the United States.
Sir, I'm sorry, could you repeat the last thing?
The ombudsman? Oh, the last thing about the.
No, the last thing you just said. I'm sorry, I just missed.
There are a few places in the, in the United States that have ombudsmen, but mostly it's popular internationally, like a lot of European countries have them. But here, there are some cities that are experimenting with them. Seattle is one, Washington is one, using them to handle complaints of citizens in such a way to empower them to help resolve these issues. So, you know, the same issues that keep coming up over and over again when they come to city council, the traffic, taxes, the police, or whatever, so that there's an interim process, you know, between meetings, where an ombudsman who represents Long Branch, but represents the citizens and the city council, someone who's, you know, really able to articulate the concerns of our citizens and to bring it to you in such a way, and to seek solutions and to work on trying to resolve them. So those three things, the community center, an anti-poverty strategy, and then the question of an ombudsman. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Linda Swinby, and I live at Gregory's Apartments. I have a request, and this, I might be out of line because times have changed, but this is, you'll excuse me, 9/11 has affected me. I was in Minneapolis when Tom Burnett, his mother and father live in Bloomington, Minnesota, and my, the, some of the terrorists were trained in the flight schools in, around Minneapolis. But when I was growing up, we were taught to respect our American flag. What I'm getting at is, I'd like to see those three flags out there, the one over here and the one in Slocombe Park, being taken down at night and put up in the morning. To me, I look at those beautiful flags, and I just, I just, it just bothers me. I don't know, maybe that's just a technicality, maybe I shouldn't be seeing anything, but it's a concern of mine. Because we were taught as kids to respect our flag. We put it up in the morning and took it down at night, and is it any possible way that this could be done now? Or am I out of line? Am I, is the day and age we live in, is it going to happen? Can we make it happen again, where we take down our flags and put it back up?
I would like to respond, Linda. I would like to respond. Yes. As long as there are light on the flag at night, it stays where it is. It doesn't come down.
Oh, okay.
That's the rule.
Are there lights on all three, the ones over here and there in Slocombe Park? There's.
No. Those three are back there for a reason. They're in memory of people.
Oh, I know that. I, oh, okay, that makes a difference. Okay. Thank you for correcting me.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
And Linda, when I, when I just spoke up, I was going to defer to Dr. Selly because if there's anybody who knows about flags, she does.
Need a motion to close the public portion of the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolutions? We can take the list of resolutions by consent, as a consent agenda? Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, oh, excuse me, roll call.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Booth?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes. Application, we have none. Miscellaneous business for the good of the order. Councilman Viera.
Yes, good evening, and nice to have a full, almost a full house. Today was a sad day. Eighteen years ago, I experienced everything from across the river. So it was, it touched my heart. And when people talk about the flags and everything, it does touch us a little bit. And to the people in Harrison Street, we're going to try to get something done for you guys. Chief Robach will work with us, stay with us afterwards. And thanks for coming.
Councilwoman, vote.
Oh, just a very short comment of certainly our prayers are really with our country, and our liberty is so important to be protected. So our thoughts are with everyone as we remember September 11th.
Councilwoman Wittes?
I'd like to thank everyone for coming this evening, and in particular, the people from Harrison Street. We certainly will look into this meeting situation. We want everyone to be safe and feel safe in their homes and their neighborhoods. And we hope everyone has a great week and hope to see you in two weeks. Thank you.
Councilwoman Selly?
I would just like to say that in our history, we should never, ever forget 9/11. I say that sincerely, and I think all of us today realize it's a very important day in our history. I had the pleasure this morning of going to the Board of Education. They always have a nice dedication ceremony. And Mr. Grant, please extend to the board my personal thanks for a wonderful job that they did. It was so nice to see all the children involved and members of the community. So thank you very much. I appreciate it. That's it, Phil.
May I, Pallone?
So I just wanted to say a few words about today as well. And eighteen years ago, as we all know, on September 10th, 3,000 men and women said goodnight to their families for the very last time, not having any idea knowing what the next day would entail. So we remember this day not only for the victims, but also for the many families that did not have their loved ones come home that night on September 11th. And of course, we're also thankful for the first responders who made the ultimate sacrifice that day, and to those who are, thank God, with us today, will forever be thankful. So thank you. I, just regarding the mayor's report, I wanted to say a few things. We have a couple open positions here in Long Branch.
We have a couple open positions here in Long Branch. Please go to www-longbranch.org under employment to view them and to apply. I wanted to mention the beach date, beach update again. So for weekends, on the weekend, fourteenth, fifteenth, twenty-first, and twenty-second, we will have lifeguards on the Great Lawn, Ocean Place, Chelsea, Mars, Cottage, Brighton. Lifeguards will be on stand, and two EMT lifeguards will be patrolling the rest of the beach area. So that's for the next two weekends. Now during the week, they are going to allow swimming if you wanted to swim, and there will be four to six lifeguards. And I shouldn't say that. I mean, we don't really want to encourage swimming, frankly, but I believe they're not going to throw people, people out. But there will be four to six lifeguards patrolling the beach, but they will only be in vehicles only. Our next coffee with the mayor is September seventeenth. I believe that's next Tuesday, if I'm not mistaken, from seven to eight-thirty PM at the Bucky James Center. Come out for light refreshments and conversations. All are welcome to attend. I'll be there. Most, if not all, of the council members will be there as well, and we bring department heads also, so that if there's a particular issue that you'd like to discuss, it's very informal, and there's no speeches. It's just, just kind of a get-together with the, with the administration and staff. Long Branch Day is coming up on Sunday, October twentieth. This is the second annual from one to four PM at Slocum Park. Please join us for a day of fun, food, family-friendly activities, and if you'd like to be a vendor, please call Lisa Kelly at the library at seven-three-two-two-two-two-three-nine-hundred. So again, thank you all for being here tonight, and have a great week. Thank you.
Thank you. First thing I'd like to say is, when I first took over the reins as council president, when it was time, during this time of the council meeting, I did state that I would not interrupt anyone during their five minutes, and when it is time and appropriate, then I would answer. So I'm just responding in regards to, I'm not attacking anyone. As they walk out or after they leave, if they're still here, and when I comment, then I comment, but it's certainly not a personal attack or towards anyone who comes to the mic. I just think I should give you your entire five minutes to say, you know, what it is that is concerning you, add a respect. So just wanted to say that. And in regards to the Senior Center, it's been brought up a few times, and when it was first brought up, I did some research myself, and I've got nothing but great reviews, if you will, in regards to how the Senior Center is run by the director. I don't want to be in any violation using, using the director's name, but certainly, so I can, I can say that there is no plans to do anything other to make it even better than it already is, if that's possible. But I know that the director and the seniors enjoy the Senior Center here in Long Branch, and that's all I heard. And of course, the young lady who did have something to say about it, that was a while ago, but I personally did look into and had no, no complaints in general in regards to how the Senior Center is run. Today, I will also say, because it is nine-one-one, I had a, actually a very good time in regards to being, Mr. Grant, please relay, as Ms. Selly said, when it first started, it was huge. We would fill up the football field and all the schools, we'd bring as many kids as they could, Rose was on the board with me. But today was much more intimate. It was more personal. It seemed like all of the politicians, if you will, from out of town, didn't show up. It was just Long Branch just paying due respect to the first responders. So I really thought it was a great, great time, and the kids that were on the screen for all of the schools got to say something, even though they couldn't make it over to the school, because the school's not big enough to hold all of the students we have. But they were able to, from their classrooms, just let them, let us know, let the first responders know what nine-one-one was all about, and it was a very, very good time. And the students who served breakfast, everything was just, just amazing, and that is something that, as Mr. Grant used to say when I was on the board, we need to do more public relations about what we're doing here in Long Branch. So please, congratulations, and you all, just again, remember who we are, not just Long Branch, not just New Jersey, but certainly the United States of America, and we come together and we get strong. Even when we fall down, we get back up, and we move forward to make, make where we live, our communities stronger and better. Thank you very much, and God bless you all. Have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Some moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.[1792.44]